...in order, and it's a special meeting of the City of Ocean Shores. This meeting will be aired on NBC TV on Wednesdays at 12:00 PM and Sunday at 7:00 PM on Channel 68. It is nine o'clock, and we'll have a roll call.
Councilmember Noble?
Here.
Councilmember Sprague?
Here.
Councilmember Elgin?
Here.
Councilmember Scott? Here. Councilmember Wills?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to public comment, let me kind of overview what we're doing today.
Do we need to make a motion to excuse them?
I don't think so in a special meeting.
Okay.
It would just be a regular meeting.
We need to approve the meeting agenda.
Oh, that we do have to do, so...
Move to approve the meeting agenda. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So, just kind of want to go over what we are presenting and what we're going to do. I have here Mike Bosneck from Trune to talk about the process of the golf course and the evaluation. Angie Volkers, finance director, talking about how we're going to be able to pay for this. We have Kurt Zander, if there's any like equipment questions that may come up, and then of course myself with it. First of all, from the process point of view, that it was not the city's original intention to be going into the golf course business when we started our budget process, so therefore it's not in the budget for what we're doing. But with that, Kurt gave us a notice, which is his right to end the contract. He gave us our notice in November, wanted to be done at the end of the year. Kurt was gracious enough to stay on as we're working through the process with it. So we're kind of at the end of the term that he wants to remain operating the golf course. We went through a process, first of all, that we looked for someone to replace Kurt that could take over our lease. We did not find anyone that was interested, and that person, whoever or company, that would be facing the same thing that we're facing right now as the city on having to purchase equipment to run the golf course. Because we didn't find anyone, then we went to the process of hiring a management company, which we had three companies that bid on it. We went through the entire process, and Trune was selected. That Trune will run the course by payment of us, but as far as the facilities and the equipment, that is the responsibility of the city. So that's kind of where we are. As far as the valuation, which is, I know that there's been a lot of conversations of how we got with the valuation, that the very, I know that we originally talked that we were between that $250,000 and $300,000 amount for the equipment. And that was based on conversations that I had with other cities and what their numbers were. Now, one of the things that, in our city, we typically pay cash for everything, so we don't really do a lease. When the numbers that came back, that Kurt and I were working on, came back at a higher level, I called back those cities and asked them, "Talk to me about what's the difference on the evaluation?" And used some of the valuation numbers that we had, which they felt that they were fair numbers that we were working off of, but the big difference is that a lot of their equipment that they were using was leased equipment, which dramatically changes the buyout price. So that's where, that number came, and at the time when we were talking to $250,000, $300,000, that was with me not having any knowledge of actually what type of equipment Kurt had and how much of, like how many carts or anything like that. And then also not included in that was the cost of inventory, which is a significant amount because we're at the beginning of the season, most of the sweaters, shirts and things like that have an Ocean Shores logo on it, which it has to be ordered before. But what typically happens when Kurt would run it is, he would order it, but the payment wouldn't be due till somewhere in the middle of summer or at the end of the, end of the season. So our feeling is that we're going to end up being able to sell everything that we have on that. As far as the valuation, that we went through, Kurt contacted Toro, which is a major supplier to golf courses, and did his own evaluation. When we went under contract with Trune, that Trune brought in Brian McCard, I don't know if I'm saying that his last name right, from Mountain Golf. He's the general manager for Mountain Golf, and Jeremy Cisandro, the equipment and facility manager of Lake Patton Golf Course. And then Mike Bosneck, who's here, also reviewed what the numbers are. They went through and did compression tests, did their evaluation. And our evaluation that we did is, we evaluated the value of the equipment, but one of the things that you don't, that we were not able to factor in was the ability to actually get that piece of equipment. So if we didn't do a deal with Kurt, could we get that someplace else? The valuation were similar, and it really is a value on conditions. One of the things, if you're dealing with Toro or you're dealing with Trune on their evaluations, they're typically buying from the same place. So typically, a tractor or a golf cart is similar value from place to place. But again, it's like if you're buying a house or a business, whatever the estimates are, are whatever the estimates are. It's somewhere in between. And I do not maintain that I'm an expert at evaluating what a golf cart is value, other than I can see what the value is, and we did call other cities to validate whether or not the numbers were close, which they said in their mind that we were getting a pretty good deal. But again, that I know that there's been out on social media talking about that we could get 30% if we were able to buy used someplace else. I've not been able to find where we would be able to replace all our equipment with used equipment, as well as not knowing what the valuation is. Now, we did take a look at, say, new golf carts. What would a new golf cart be? And a lot of the golf cart, golf courses are moving into electric, which we do not have that ability right now without more infrastructure. But even with that, a electric cart, new, is $87.57. A gas cart, which is what we're purchasing, a new one is $67.44. So if you just compare on our buyout sheet, there is a cost saving, understanding that they're used. That if I look at a fairway mower, a new bottom line fairway mower is going to cost $77,606, what Kurt's going to be selling it to us is for $53,000. Again, new versus used. And that's if we can actually get those. So that's where the kind of the valuations came. And I know that there was confusion from the council, and my apologies to you, is the original document that you had as far as what we're looking for, that the numbers were the same for what Kurt's numbers were and what the city's were. That was the final document that Kurt and I agreed on because we were having multiple conversations about pricing, and we wanted to make sure that both of us agreed to whatever that number was. And that's why I, so I had given you another sheet that actually was the original document. If I got it here. You should have on your sheet, there's a original document that looks almost identical to the, do you have it? It's this one? So it is a more, where you look at the top, Zander is $414,715 for equipment, and third party is $398,802.50. This document was the original document that we started negotiations with. So if you look at that, there's a dramatic difference. And one of the things you'll see is below, there's $30,000 listed as set aside inventory. Those were, that's inventory that was ordered by Kurt, delivered, but not open, but not paid for. And so that $30,000 should move up to the $29,623. So that's, so that is an add-on to it. And then on top of that, that when Trune brought entire staff out to do inventory, went through inventory, everything that they had, clubhouse, everything in there, so that number is actually higher than we originally have. So that's, that's the number, we can talk a little bit more about how that came about. But again, my number one focus as mayor, working through negotiation, is to make sure that it is a fair deal for the city, as well as a fair deal for Kurt. And I know that there's a lot of moving parts on this, and we've been moving very quickly on it, but that's kind of where we are. So that's, that's the first part. So we'll open it to public comment, and then council, you can ask questions. So do I have public comment?
Back and back.
Okay, I've got Paula, then I've got you.
Good morning. I'm here to urge city council to really pass this so we can move forward. And the golf course isn't just about golfers, it's about our entire community. The tournaments they have that support the charities that are people in our community use, people who have property on the golf course, they may not be golfers, but that's their backyard, and it's part of our history. Ocean Shores was built with a golf course, and we need to maintain that. And I know it's a big number, but I think it's a fair number, and I just want you all to vote yes, and so we can move forward. Thanks.
If we could just not have the clapping, but the person in the very back?
Yes, thank you. Can I speak back here? Do you want me up here?
Up here.
All right.
You don't need a microphone. Hi, my name is Biff Lennahan. I have been a resident of Ocean Shores for 30 years. I was here when Kurt took over, Kurt and Ronnie took over. And I got to tell you something, I belong to a number of golf courses, and I would put this golf course up to any course. You can play it all year long. With that being said, I know the equipment, how it has to be, and how operable it has to be. Because when I was a young man, back in '58 or '59, I got a job at Broadmore Golf and Country Club, working on the greens fee. I had to be work at 3:30 in the morning. I would usually get home about 9:00 or 10:00 and be dead. I suffered broken arms and broken fingers. I know from Kurt's schedule, he gets here at 3:30 in the morning, doesn't get home to about 9:30. So the blood, sweat, and tears that he has into this golf course is, I commend him on it. He loves his job. Now, I just want to say one other little thing. I'm an avid car collector, and let's just pick a car that everybody knows. Let's just pick a 1967 Corvette, okay? We have one here in Ocean Shores for X amount of dollars, but then there's one back in the East Coast for the same amount of money. Well, I think I'm going to check the one out here first, find out what it's all about. If I have to go back there, I know nothing about it, I'm going to have to spend the money to check it out. I can tell you for a fact, I would pick the one here. I can also tell you for a fact that this golf course is second to none when you play it. You can play this golf course all year long, and it's because of the maintenance that is done on it. It's just not mowing the grass, mowing the greens, it's putting drainage ditches in. It's absolutely a wonderful place, so pay the money. It's a no-brainer to me. Might not be a no-brainer to a lot of people, but I can honestly say, I run a very large business in my life and retired at an early age. God was good to me, and I really, I realized one thing in life, don't challenge the system. And the system here is pay the man for the equipment, because I know that equipment is good. You could just tell. Anybody who's against this, anybody who's wants to go to eBay to try to buy the equipment, I challenge you to get out and walk on the golf course. Take a trip around the golf course. See how beautiful the golf course is. And then you'll see that the equipment here...
Sir, you need to address the council.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, to walk out on the golf course, to view the golf course and see how beautiful it is, so the equipment is the right equipment for the golf course. And besides that, anybody who has a golf cart, who has a car, what's the yellow light mean? Is that, I'm getting ready to go? I'm a drag racer too, so I see that yellow light, and I know the next one is, what, green or red?
Red.
Uh-oh, okay, I better hurry then. I challenge anybody, go out there, check the golf course out, it is beautiful. And there's a relationship between the equipment and the golf course. The equipment here loves the golf course. It's been maintained. All right, peace out, I'm done.
I've got in the red person right there, and then I've got the gentleman that's standing up there, and then I've got there and there.
Good morning, council. Eleanor Dollman of the Lake Street. My husband and I have lived in this community for 20 years. We do not play golf, and we do not live on the golf course, but we do recognize what a huge asset this is to the community. Obviously, Westport does. We're going to have some tough competition for those tourist dollars that our local businesses need. And I think we need to make sure that we continue to have the quality of a golf course that we have currently. And when you're buying equipment, sometimes the cheap becomes expensive. So I think, you know, if you do due diligence, you have to sometimes bite the bullet and pay the price in order to maintain this huge asset that we are fortunate enough to have in this community. So I hope this council will move forward and make sure that we keep the golf course in its current condition. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you?
I am standing up. I've been fortunate enough to be allowed to help the Zander family and do a little bit of work at the golf course. And of course, one of my main jobs is I make everybody else look good. But besides that, Kurt and Tanya have given their lives to Ocean Shores Golf Course. And now, when we're getting right down to it, you can't make a transition, and, by the way, I've owned a golf course for 50 years. I'm one of those guys, I started mowing greens at 3:30 in the morning, and I'd be there at 10 o'clock at night cleaning the grill. I kind of do know about golf courses. Anyways, you couldn't have an easier transition than having Trune come in with experts. They run 450 odd golf courses around the world, I might be off on that, might be more than that, close to 200 in the United States. And here you have an operation that has been successful, kept a very good product there without having the benefit of making a great deal of money over the years, but it's been out of love and caring. And Trune knows what it takes to keep a golf course going. And Trune doesn't want to spend any more than they have to, because they have to make money for the city. You can't go out and buy equipment for what they're going to be able to purchase the equipment from Kurt for. Especially now with all the stuff from COVID and all the can't get this and can't get that, and it's stuck in ports out in the ocean, and you've got all this stuff going on. I usually don't swear, I'm trying not to. You have all this stuff going on, so could you even get the equipment in time to mow the greens, to mow the fairways? And when the course goes to seed, it's tough to bring back, and it takes a long time to bring back. This has to be mowed the next day, not two months from now. You can't fiddle around, because somebody might think that somebody's getting a good deal or something or another. You have people who are willing to turn this over, we have people who are willing to take it over. Both parties want it to succeed. The price of the stuff, you can't begin to buy at what this price is. And to give up the golf course would be absurd. Ocean Shores needs a golf course. That's the time. Thank you.
And Nani? And I'll get Randy next.
I have the bad guys come first.
I'm short like him, so. Anyways, I'm a resident of Ocean Shores taxpayer, and I recently moved into the community four years ago. This is nothing to do with Mr. Zander, but everything to do with our golf course. And that's the reason why I purchased my home there. It is a beautiful golf course, yes, for scenery, but I have walked the golf course, not once, but three times. And I was so afraid that I would be twisting my ankles from walking on it. As far as watching people coming in to mow the lawn, it was only like when the weather got warmer, and, you know, it wasn't something that was done every day, like this gentleman said he does. The other thing is that I have played, I wasn't sure, but I looked up Mr. Trune's golf courses, and I have played on a couple of his golf courses, and they're pristine. You can walk on it, you can do it, like after the golf course closes, everybody goes out and exercise, but it's pristine. Our golf course needs help. It needs to be maintained. You cannot just look at it and say, "Well, this is our golf course, we're going to keep it as it is." No, we have to improve the golf course so we can attract star golfers. When I was here, the LPGA came in. We, I didn't see any PGA people, but I did see the LPGA twice. And I'd like to see more, more of this that come to Ocean Shores, so we can have our businesses prosper and the taxes and stuff get paid, so we don't have to pay more. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Randy?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Randy Scott. I've been playing golf here since about 1982. I'm, I've been a resident of Ocean Shores since 2001. I'm married to a member of the Quinault tribe, and that's why I started playing it a long time ago. We used to play with, a bunch of us from the tribe would come down and play, and then I got to meet other members, and so I would, I would play with other members. One of the ones I remember is Mr. Ballard, old man Ballard, we called him, and I'd play with him and his son John. We played a lot of golf together on his golf course in the 80s and 90s. I think this golf course is the biggest asset that the city owns, you know, besides the roads. I think it's the biggest asset, probably the best asset that the city owns. And I think that the investment that has been made so far, and the conversation that you've gone through so far, an agreement with Trune, is worth an extra little investment. And it's, it's time for this to happen. This man, Kurt and Tanya have been here for, I want to say ever, but they might feel like it sometimes. I don't know how we're going to train them not to get up in the morning and drive to Ocean Shores. I would, I would say and urge the city to vote yes. This is, this is a, to me, a no-brainer. You've got an agreement, this takes, puts the icing on the cake of that agreement. And so I hope that you guys will support it and support Trune. I've played, I've probably played about 15 of the Trune golf courses around the country. I used to travel a lot, and I'd always take my golf clubs. And I know that they own golf, or they operate golf courses on tribal lands in Arizona. And the tribes are enamored and just blessed that Trune is helping them in operations of their golf courses. And Trune and the tribes have great relationships in relation to the operation of those facilities, and what those facilities generate for both the company and the tribe. And I see no reason why that can't happen here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments? In, right, yes?
Hi, my name is Brady Mast. I've lived here a couple of years, moved here with my wife, and we have a little house on the golf course. And it's been my pleasure getting to know Kurt, Zander and his wife. We moved here to play golf. Since I've been here, I've let, Kurt's let me help him out a little bit, mowing tee boxes, what have you. Met a lot of friends, great people. But I live here, I built the house on the first fairway to play golf. That's why I live where I'm at. We, we go to my friend's restaurant, Galway Bay, go to Los Hermanos, our place, support a lot of businesses. But we're here and play, pay our property tax here because we play golf. That's the only, that's the main thing. It's a great golf course, great bunch of folks. Five days. You have five days, I think, is, if you do not mow that golf course, in five days, it starts reverting back to pasture ground. And like my good friend John Rochelle said, you can't, you can't just let the green go up and then say, "Oh, we'll cut it now." It doesn't work, you pull the roots in it, you strip, you ruin them. And it's a long process to get them back. Now, I know supply chain, right now, it's tough to get equipment, you can't do it. I've seen Kurt physically try to get the equipment, you can't do it. "Oh, it's six months out." 10, 12 months later, he doesn't have it. And might be due to COVID, might be other problems, I don't know, but I just know, supply, demand, big demand, no supply. The value that he is asking for his equipment is not exorbitant. His stuff works, you got to have it. If you don't have it, guess what? You're going to lose taxpayers, people that support business. I retired, I did really well in my business. My wife and I live here, we love it because of the golf. That's it. We own property here, we bought and sold property here. We, we love it here, but without the golf course, we're gone. And thanks, guys.
Thank you. Another comment, back in the very back corner.
Hello, my name's Ron Purple. Recently moved here about a year ago, from the Maple Valley area, our family. Been coming out here for years, and one of the reasons we come out here with our grandkids, with our kids, you know, through the years, is the golf course. We did move and we bought a house right on the golf course. One thing that we see daily, and it's rain, it doesn't matter the weather, we see people running out on their golf, just pushing their carts, sleet coming down. It's just incredible how, how this golf course is great for this community. This equipment is a must. We see them out there all the time, working on this golf course. It's awesome for the community, for tourism. We go out here, our family comes out all the time, we restaurants a couple times a week. It's, it would be a shame for this, for this city not to support that and buy this equipment. I'm urging you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. In the front row, and I've got someone over on that side next. So you...
Good morning, Mayor. My name's Dave Epic, I'm a resident here of Ocean Shores. Moved down here a few years back. One of the first things we did, one of the things, for us to pull to come down here, I've been a longtime golfer, golfed and I lived up in the upper northwest. Ocean Shores was a, was a pull for us. It's a beautiful course to play in, all year long. Came down, stores, they were so nice to us, we, you know, welcomed us to this place. I myself work here in the community, I'm a PM up at Seabrook. Many of the people live up there, what do they think they do on the weekend? These guys run down and play golf down here. They're bringing money to this town all the weekends. There's no golf course up there, so they all come down here. All they, every guy I talk to, the people come to me, they ask me, "Where's a golf course?" And I explain where it's at, they thank me the next month I see them. So I urge you guys, what he's asking for is equipment, I'm in the business, it's a fair deal, and his equipment is top-notch. And then you got a, Trune here to run it, that's a no-brainer for this, this community. So I hope we vote... So I hope we, uh, vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Have someone over on this side, yes?
Good morning. I'm Melanie Olson. I am a very new resident in Ocean Shores, moved here from the Olympia area where I was for 40 years. Um, I have always come down, enjoyed the community, decided to make this my home base in retirement. And I did purchase a home on the golf course. I've lived on golf courses up in Olympia for many years. This is, um, an important asset to the community. I have just come to know Tanya and Kurt and have the utmost respect for them, but this is a business decision in the end. And, um, I have appreciated, I think, the thoughtfulness and the care and the forward thinking that I've seen this body approach this, uh, challenge with. And I would encourage you to prepare to, um, take care of this asset for, for those. There's so many wonderful things about this area, so many wonderful recreation opportunities, so many wonderful opportunities for people to gather. Uh, this is a community of folks who care about Ocean Shores, who do a lot of volunteer work, um, just even as a, as a community of golfers. So I would encourage you to vote yes, um, and to purchase this equipment. It seems that there's been a thoughtful inventory and a lot of thought into pricing and I think you should move forward. Thank you.
More comments? That corner? Yes?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Susan Canari and I'm not a golfer and I don't live on the golf course. I never had any intention of putting homeless housing on the golf course and I don't have any intention of putting homeless housing on the golf course in the future. I'm delighted that we have a situation now where we will have a management company to take care of our golf course. From the taxpayers' perspective, and I thank the lady who spoke earlier, this is a financial decision and there is some concern that the capital improvement fund will be depleted. And that capital improvement fund is for the city infrastructure to pay for sewer, water and city buildings. So I do hope that the council will address that and allay our fears that the money for the golf course equipment will not impact the city in negative ways in regards to the infrastructure. And as a member of the hotel coalition, I'm reaching out once again to Trune. I have sent emails, I've invited you to come to our meetings. Marketing of the golf course in Ocean Shores, as you said in your presentations, is vital and we really look forward to working with you to see what happens in the future. Thank you very much.
Do I have more comments? Get it back, straight back.
My name is Michael Duncan. I'm pastor at Faith Community Church and I actually just got off the golf course this morning. Um, I spend, it's like my third home, uh, the church being my second one. Uh, it would seem to me that we're coming into the season of golf and if you do not purchase the equipment that is currently available to you, that you will end up closing the golf course during the height of its season. And if we're looking at this as a financial, um, situation, you're going to lose all of that revenue because the golf course is going to be closed. And all of the tourists that would come here merely to play golf, come to the beach and then go to the golf course, aren't, aren't going to be coming. They'll be, they will go find other locations. And so if you're looking at it just from a revenue standpoint, if you don't get the equipment that's on site, the golf course will be closed for months as you try to filter in equipment from various locations. So I would encourage you to go ahead and vote yes on this because it will be far more beneficial in the long run, even in the short term, um, than if you delay this and try and find equipment outside of Ocean Shores. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Do I have any other, other comment? Yes, well...
Lilian Broadbent, um, because we're personal, well, some of us, um, Kurt Zander was my first opponent in Ocean Shores and what a treat that was. Cause it forced me to understand the golf course, what it did and what it didn't do so that I could argue with him about whether or not we should take part of the weather wax and let, let the golf course take that over or whether we should pursue the wetland bank.
I remember those days.
Those were good arguments, but you know what? They were respectful. And as I look at this process, this has been the most open, most positive process I have seen along the way. Everyone has had an opportunity to put their two cents in. I know there are people who have, we just spent $50,000 on an audit because there were people who didn't understand and didn't want to. What we're looking at here is a turnkey operation. And in order to do that, we have to have the equipment. Now, in terms of our capital reserve fund, it is today, what Angie, three times what it was three years ago, four years ago? More than that, okay? So we have made tremendous progress and this is not an impact to our, everything's an impact to our capital fund, but this is not a significant impact and we will recoup that very quickly. And I would just urge you to go ahead, let's get this over with. Put Facebook aside, we don't need all the, uh, people who didn't participate in the process that now choose to chirp. So I would say, move forward, let's get it done. John, you've done an incredible job on this and Scott, you guys have worked out and made sure that it's, it's fair for everybody. And that's all anyone in this city can ask for. Thank you.
Do I have any other, other comment? I'm seeing none, so over to council. Eric?
So I want to thank everybody for their comments. They're hugely appreciated. Uh, my perspective on this process and this purchase that we're looking at, um, you know, the golf course, thanks to Kurt and Tanya over the last 30 years, has stayed a pretty viable golf course. And I think it's a testament that the people that are here supporting the golf course is because of what Kurt and Tanya have done over the last 30 years. Uh, the golf course is part of our legacy of Ocean Shores. I mean, it is what Ocean Shores was when it first opened up. And I look at this, what we're doing today as an investment in our future of Ocean Shores. I'm not a golfer, I don't spend a lot of time golfing out there, but I can see the impact that this golf course has and for Trune to come in and be willing to take it to the next level, the, the economic impact that we will see for that far outweighs what we're spending and looking at spending today. And what it will do for Ocean Shores, I mean, we will be known for the golf course again, you know, and we are known for it with Kurt and Tanya, but with Trune's ability to market it outside, it'll, it will take us to the next level. So, you know, I support this in a huge way and it's truly just an investment in Ocean Shores' future that will only pay off down the road.
Richard?
I have, I think, two questions. My first question is, it's my understanding that the, one of the reasons that our golf cars are in such good shape is because Kurt purchased them made out of non-corrosive metals and materials. So Kurt, is that, am I correct in that assumption?
Yeah, they're aluminum and plastic, so they don't rust.
So then my question to John is when you were pricing the new equipment, are those also non-corrosive materials or do you know?
I actually don't know. I, I just ask for golf cars, uh, Mike might know.
So, I don't know if this is on yet or how...
Pull it, pull it further.
Okay. We got the quote from the exact same golf car manufacturer that Kurt uses, so they, it is the same aluminum frame and material.
So then I conclude you, we're, we're comparing apples and apples. Uh, and I agree with what Eric said, that, you know, this is a great deal. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Frank?
I have a question maybe for Trune or for you guys. What's the life expectancy of the equipment we're buying?
The equipment's not new, um, we all know that. Uh, some of the pieces that Kurt has purchased recently are fairly new. Um, some of them are, I think one of the mowers was 1993, the other was 2010 and, and believe it or not, they're still working. And that is a testament to Kurt's mechanical ability to keep the fleet going. Uh, the golf cars, I believe, are seven years old. Um, when I looked at, at the equipment, uh, and Kurt looked me in the eye and he says, you've got at least three good working years on this equipment. Uh, there are a few pieces that we are going to need to order relatively soon, knowing that the supply chain is probably two years out. Uh, those are the Triplex mowers, the 1993 model and the 2010 model. But other than that, um, we feel the equipment is in good working condition and should get us through, um, at least two to three more years.
Catherine?
So, excuse me, I apologize. So, um, I also want to thank everybody who came and spoke and, uh, filled us in on some of the golf course issues that we may or may not understand. I'm not a golfer, however, I know that there are a lot of things that we as a society do to support, um, other people's interests. We have a, we have a park system, some people use the park, some people do not. It's part of our social fabric, um, and I clearly get that. I do have a couple of questions. Can you explain for us, um, on the page that you provided, uh, with the, with the corrective numbers, I think were your beginning numbers, I now understand that. What exactly you mean by book money issued 40,517 gross haircut on cost of goods sold, COGS? I think that many of, probably a lot of our citizens are wondering about that. What is a haircut on cost of goods sold?
So this, this was something that Kurt and I probably had somewhat of a heated discussion. Um, and what that is, is money that is set aside for like a gift certificate, uh, they can come back and redeem at a later date. Uh, the, the haircut part is the profit amount of it because obviously if you have a hundred dollar gifts, gift certificate, you're not going, it's not going to cost me a hundred dollars, it's going to cost me whatever the value is. So the discussion went, uh, my feeling is that it's a city, the city should take the whole, the whole thing, which is what we actually agreed to. Um, the original when we started was that Kurt would keep part of that money.
And then I'm interested in Angie's walkthrough with the 301 fund because I think that's a big question that probably a lot of people have. So maybe that's a good place to start.
I can do that. So, uh, as Lilian mentioned, we have bolstered our capital improvement fund. In the 2015, 2016 budget, our ending fund balance was 269,000. Currently sits at almost 1.7 million. Honestly, it's because of good decisions made by the city council over the last few biennial budgets. We've put almost a million dollars from general fund surplus into this fund. And it's for things like this. It's to sit there until we need it, until we come across a priority that needs funding and then we use it and then we'll build it up again. So, um, as you know, as you all have been party to as well, we have this no debt philosophy. We've had it since I started here in 2016. That's why my recommendation is, you know, we have this reserve money, we don't want any new debt, we don't want to pay interest, so let's just pay it off. The money's there, let's just do it, move on. And I believe, um, based on what I've heard from council, uh, obviously the approval of the professional service agreement speaks volumes, that the golf course is a priority and we want to continue to operate the golf course. So my recommendation, the money's there, let's do it, let's pay it off, let's not accrue any debt, let's not pay any interest and keep operational come Monday. Because I have concerns about the ordering equipment as well, that all has to go through the bid process, there's issues with supply chain, some of the stuff's two years out. So really, this is in our best interest to get this done and be able to move forward.
So can I ask a follow-up question?
You can ask a follow-up question and then I've got Richard.
Right. So explain, the purchase price agreement is 412,250 dollars and 56 cents. And then there's an estimated taxes and fees of $50,000, which is not in the amount that we would pay over a two-year, um, not, non-interest bearing, uh, two payments. So what is that $50,000? That goes to the state on booked, what we will own is booked inventory? Will that go out, sort of drips and grabs?
Yes. So I see it as when you buy a used car. When you go get the title to the used car, you have to walk in there and pay the sales tax on the car to get the title, as well as the fees. So we're going to work with the state, um, some of the resale stuff might not have sales tax applicable, but the equipment will. So our best guess without, you know, knowing exactly what we're going to have titles on, what we're going to have to pay use tax on, things like that was, let's just be conservative, do $50,000 to make sure there's enough money there as these things occur.
Richard?
I would like to make a motion, uh, authorizing the mayor to sign the Ocean Shores golf course, uh, equipment and inventory purchase and sales agreement.
Second?
Before, there's going to be, we're going to need to make an amendment. I've got two amendments that we need to put on it just because of, of things, but, um, before I do that, is there any more discussion? Catherine?
I just have one other, uh, question. On the, uh, page seven of our packet, page one of five of the, uh, purchase and sales agreement, under payment of the purchase price, we're talking about two installments, which I don't have a problem with. Will we be booking then the, that second installment, the 212,250 dollars and 56 cents into the reserve for the capital fund 301?
Um, it's, it'll be in the budget because we'll pay it in 2024. So there's, it'll just be part of the budget amendment that we do. We're just paying some of it this year, some of it next year. So it doesn't really have any effect on the budget.
So it won't go into, it won't go into the capital fund as a reserve like our SCUBA equipment is, or?
Nope. So what will happen is on that budget amendment page, uh, I'm just going to do a budget amendment for the 462,000 to that bars code in the capital fund and we'll just pay it, pay one installment and then pay the next installment and then we'll be done.
Okay. And I'm going to request that we get that budget amendment sooner than what we originally thought we would. So pretty darn soon, please.
Sounds good.
Okay, so the, the two amendments are, I guess it actually could be one, one amendment because they're both kind of the same. It's really to clean up the language of the conversation I had with, with Kurt, what he would like. He's going to be closing his corporation, so we would like to change the purchase and sale agreement to show an agreement with Kurt and Tanya Zander doing business as Ocean Shores Golf Car, Golf Course. And then change number three, the payment, purchase price installment due date from January 5th to April 15th, 2024. So they're just more of a, a thing for what Kurt would like to have done, um, and so they're just minor, so they're not changing anything that we've already talked about. Richard?
I amend my motion to include the changes you just described.
But I'm thinking we just make, all you need to do is make an amendment, we vote on the amendment, then we vote on the motion.
However, we have to do that correctly.
Okay.
Move to amend the, uh, purchase and sales agreement to, uh, show on page three, excuse me, on item three, the second installment being due April 15th, 2024 and the purchase and sales agreement to be made between the city of Ocean Shores and Ocean Shores...
Kurt Zander.
And Kurt, Kurt and Ton, Tanya and Zander. And Kurt, Kurt and Tanya and Zander. So strike Ocean Shores Golf Course.
No, then doing business as Ocean Shores Golf Course.
DBA, Ocean Shores Golf Course.
Okay. Okay, so we've got a, on the amendment, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's five zero. Then we have a motion on approving the purchase, or purchase of equipment from Kurt. And we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, five zero. Thank you.